Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of Midland Council for Wednesday, June the 2nd, 2021. This meeting is being held virtually and will be broadcast on channel 53 Rogers Cable TV. It can also be found on the Midland YouTube channel if you wish to view it subsequently. It's also being live streamed. I'd like to call this meeting to order as we have quorum. And I'd like to read our land acknowledgements. So as we begin, the town of Midlands recognizes that it is located on land which is to traditional and treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people now known as the Chippewa Tri Council comprised of Bosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre-confederation treaty five and treaty 16 and included within the Williams Treaties of 1923. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land which is the traditional territory of the here on Wendat and the historical homelands of the Maiti and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. I'd like to ask if there any, I'd like to ask if people would join me in a moment of silence and reflect on the abomination of is the the school system that resulted in the deaths of 215 young Aboriginal children and probably if time passes, there'll be more. The impact of that on their families and the continuing impact of the situation between Canada, the church and the and these indigenous communities. Thank you very much. I'll ask if there are any declarations of conflict of interest. And I think before I do that, Madam Clerk, can you change the screen I to? So I can see everybody on my screen. Was that my?
I believe it could be on your end because I can see everybody.
It's on my end. Thank you. Technically challenged as usual.
Just gallery view, I think.
It is gallery view. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all here. So declarations pecuniary or conflict of interest. Seeing none. I have a motion by councillor Shesky, seconded by councillor Post, that the contents of the regular council agenda for June 2nd, 2021 be approved. Comments or questions from the council from council? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries. Next, we have the consent agenda and it's moved by Deputy Mayor Ross, seconded by councillor Downer, that items that the items rather and related recommendations contained within the June 2nd, 2021 consent agenda as consent items having been considered by council be adopted with the exception of item 5.4.1 CSR dash 2021 dash 38 entrance appeal dash 900 Yuga Avenue. Item 5.4.2 CSR dash 2021 dash 39 request for draft plan extension Midland Bay Estates 251311 and 353 Fuller Avenue. Item 5.4.4 CSR dash 2021 dash 41 goose management framework, which will be considered under section 10 reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for councils consideration. Are there any comments from council with respect to the motion? Councillor Gordon?
Your worship, just a quick acknowledgement that the late addition to our agenda that people will see online, which is a letter from the proponents for that draft plan subdivision extension is here and we've received it and we will talk about that letter and the request contained inside that letter during the report section that it was just mentioned will be addressed later in this meeting.
Actually, I was going to ask for council's permission to move that item to the to be considered at the same time as the request. Well, perfect. Right. Right now it's scheduled slightly differently under correspondence, but I'd like last counsel in a moment to to move that. But thank you for that. Cost me.
Thank you. Just wanted to speak to appreciation for the staff on the flag raising policy. It seems such a simple housekeeping policy, but it's great to, you know, refresh some of these old policies. I love the race flag raising ceremonies. They're they're a very nice simple thing that we can do. So it's great to standardize that and modernize that. So that appreciate the effort from staff to do that. And I just wanted to give a huge shout out in the CIP there. We haven't seen the design, but the winners have been announced for the downtown public art project. So congratulation for Holly Archer and Camille Miles on their partnership on the project entitled Sown. We're really excited to see what it looks like installed. And thank you, everyone, Karen Mealing and all the team on reviewing applicants and everyone for submitting designs. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you. Any further comments or questions from council? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you.
Your worship, just for your information, that item that you're pulling 5.1.1 that relates to the Midland Bay Estates, we'll just add that to the consent agenda. Just wanted to make you aware of that.
I think actually, Madam Clerk, that some of the councillors are going to want to speak to that as part of the conversation around the draft plan extension.
Okay, so we'll just consider it as a pulled item within
within the consent agenda.
Within the list that was already withdrawn. Okay.
Okay, thank you very much. And with that, I have a motion by councillor Cunningham, seconded by councillor Gordon, that council resolved into the committee of the whole. All those in favor? Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, worship. Welcome, everybody, and welcome to committee at whole on June 2nd, 2021. We have no presentations, but we do have two deputations. It must be June as we have Mr. Chapman with us today with regards to Terry 2021 Terry Fox Day. Are you with us? Madam Clerk, is Mr. Chapman with us today?
Yes, he is. He's just been promoted to panelist. So he should be able to sign in.
Hello, Mr. Chapman. How are you this evening, sir?
Sorry, I was locked up there for a moment. I think
I'm here today, Mr. Chapman. Thanks for joining us. I just said it must be June. We get the pleasure of Terry Fox Day information for 2021. I'll remind you that you have 10 minutes and we may have a couple of questions, but thank you for coming and it's all the floor is all yours.
Okay, thank you very much. And thank you, Mayor and and council for giving me a little time to bring you up to date on our Terry Fox activities. We nationally, we've been told we're going virtual again this year in light of COVID. We can't break down on that and kind of associate Terry's name with anything with any kind of risk involved in it of that nature. So we will be having an event which I'll describe to you on September 19th, 2021 and some surrounding events as well. What I'd like to do is quickly take you through how we finished last year, which was delightful in our plan for this year and how how we can ask you to help again this year. And I appreciate all the support you've given us in the years gone by. We can go forward, please. Thank you. This is the money chart. Always got to do show me the money. And we've got something to be pretty proud of. In the last six years, we've more than doubled our annual contribution to the foundation, which is darn good. Last year, obviously with COVID, we lost some of our revenue streams are a lot of the auction activities, et cetera, were gone and we couldn't have our big event, which creates a lot of money for us. So we did drop back from over 100,000 last year to 87 in last year with the virtual program. But the headquarters expectation from us was and everybody else that we would lose about 50% of our gross revenue. We hit 87 and our headquarters was frankly delighted with our performance. We also had 50,000 bucks in the bank before the event even started, which to me kind of says our community is willing to support this cause even if there is no event. Because last year we really did have a last minute, very virtual event, still made darn good money and this community is behind this cause. We also had over half of our revenue processed online. So no administration and all of that kind of that kind of labor and related costs can now go to cancer research, which delights us. We're going to pump that 87 up this year, hopefully to 110 or more. And I'll tell you how we're going to do that in a second. We can go forward, please. Just on money again, continuing that we are always since I've been around and it's been 16 years now. We are always in the top 12 in Ontario. There's over 200 teams. Normally, and we are always in the top 10 for gross donation as well as per capita donation. I think it's a real point of pride for our community that that we're doing that. We have though only about 2% of our total population of the the area of the four communities. Only about 1,000 people are actively engaged, come out, run, walk, bike, whatever, or donate money. If we've got 50,000 folks in our community, we're only getting about 2%, 2% right now. So what I want to try and do this year in particular is look, let the other 98% know that we're out here. We need their support. We don't want to ask a lot from anybody in light of the economic impact of COVID. But let's ask a whole lot of people for a little bit of money and I think we can raise a whole lot more than we've ever done before. So that we're going to push on that this year, not for a bunch of money from a few, a little bit of money from a lot. I noted on there 45 teams last year gave us two thirds of our gross revenue. That again is a lot of very few people giving a lot of money and it's not a great business model. We need more participants and that's what we'll drive for this year. Go ahead, please. Just what we're going to do this year, shirt sales on July 3rd, there will be a ride of hope. It'll be a bike ride from wherever to wherever. Now, your choice, it's a virtual ride started last year out in DC where they had a riding program like this where they tried to go 40,000 kilometers, the circumference of the earth in celebration of what Kerry accomplished. This year, we're going to roll it out here locally and see how it goes this year. We have decided since I submitted these slides to do a silent auction, we will do it this year. We're looking for goods to auction off and I'm looking for a place to kind of front the the auction right of it on Main Street, King Street. I got some great offers of support already from your BIA and Rotary as well as Penetang BI, Penetang Rotary just have been great. So I'm not asking for anything right now. I will ask for things to to sell in a little while. We will have an un-run again, which we did last year. Again, it's a run with no starting line, no finish line, no, no structure at all around it. Other than we will have a online kickoff and exercise module from 9:30 till 10:00 on September 19th. We'd like you all to join that. Bounce along to Michelle Mink, stretch your muscles, get ready to go, put on your Terry shirt, hit the outside door and run all, you know, let's go all over downtown area, high fiving each other and celebrating this this Terry's cause together. And the very last thing on this chart is there will be a thing called a try this year. If we just go on to the next slide, please, I'll explain it a little bit more. Whoops, one more, please. Thank you. Some smart marketing person this year noticed that the word try is buried in the word Terry. And we're going to be seeing a lot of material this year focused on trying. We all heard Terry say anything is possible. If you try, we're going to encourage that like crazy and ask everybody, whatever you've done in the past in supporting of cancer research, can you do a little more? If you gave five bucks before, can you give 10 now? If you walked 20 kilometers last year, can you walk 25 this year? It's asking each of us to think, look what Terry did. Can we ask a little bit more of ourselves? Not a lot, a little bit more and come through for Terry. So when you register this year as a group or an individual, you will be asked on the website, what is your try, your personal try? There will be no tracking of it. It's just between you and you. But let's see what we can do for Terry this year. Okay, we can go on. I won't go back to that previous slide. I'm as I'm running around doing the the rounds right now, communicating with lots of people. John Maine got to listen to me last night and again tonight, similar charts, John. Just some ideas of what people might do to do their try this year and it's create an event, keep it low on participation, whatever the COVID regulations are at the time, we want to keep groups to that size and still honor any any distancing criteria that are there, but there's a million things we can do. And last year, some people started doing things. We did see bake sales, book sales, garage sales, community walks. Let's do it again this year. Let's do it more organized. Let's get more teams and and get them to kick in more money for research this year. So as I talk to each audience, want to ask you all to think about what your try could be. You always hear me talk about this. What's special about the foundation? It's Terry's brand is sparkling. We all know that it's known all over the world and and recognized. We're proud to be part of it. There's no fee or donation to to be part of our our activities. We have no expenses. Everything is donated and we don't co-brand with anybody. Every cent raised for the Terry Fox Foundation goes to the Terry Fox Foundation, not shared with anybody else.
Two minutes, sir.
I'm sorry?
Two minutes if we can wrap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I will. We just on the bottom there, our money is in good hands according to Charity Intelligence Canada. We're only spending at a national level only 7% on administrative activities and that's very lean. So I think it's a great place to invest. We'll go forward, please. You've heard me sing this song before. We've been touched. We've all been touched by cancer and touched isn't the right word. It's kicked. It's it's hurt by cancer and and we got to stop this. There are some great improvements going on. Obviously, I'm not going to go into them in two minutes, but there's great medical things going on. There is great informational things going on and there's a lot more sharing of information than I've ever seen since I've been near this. Is there local return on investment for throwing money at this here? You betcha. I'm on the board of the Cancer Support Center locally and I'll tell you, I can show you 200 people who think this is the best investment you could make with your money to help save their lives and have already saved lives. Last chart, please, I believe. Yeah, just how you can help. Obviously, the best thing you can do is have a team, enter a team, create an event, go fundraise and donate all the money. That's it in a nutshell. But we would ask you to follow us on our social media platforms. I've listed them there. Buy shirts. They'll all be in by Canada Day. So we'd love to see people start wearing them by Canada Day. Hold a Terry Fox Day in council and you've done this before and held a flag raising ceremony and where your Terry sheet sheets shirts, I'm sorry, to council. And then anything you could do to help promote us in your calendar, your newsletters, your digital signage, that would be terrific. And then I put at the bottom there, just register and participate. Last line on there is just on on 9:30 on September 19th, be there, sign on to your TV 53, Channel 53 and go through the kickoff with us, go out your door with your Terry shirt on and bring us some money, please. I will stop on that note. I know I'm out of time and gladly answer any questions if there's time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chapman. Always a pleasure and congratulations on a great 2020. That is fantastic. Midland always Midland an area, North Simcoe always proves to be amazing community. Councillor Maine, you had a question, sir?
Yeah, thank you so much. I was fortunate to hear the great presentation at the BI meeting last night. I just want to say thank you. I just wanted to plug. We had a great single donation last year, $500 from Crystal Robertson of New Orleans Pizza. So that was amazing. The business even isn't even in town, but she felt very connected. Lots of people were buying pizzas last year, as it turns out. So I know for sure, we're definitely going to put a team together. September is the time of year when I have to learn how to run 10K again. So I'll certainly do what I can to do and this is a great. It's unfortunate that we don't get to have the awesome community event, but it's understandable and people get to go wherever they're comfortable. Little Lake Park, the trail systems. It was great to see lots of people with the white Terry Fox shirts out last year and I and I always look forward to the great design from the Terry Fox team. So thank you, Don, and looking forward to it in September.
Thanks very much, John. Thank you, Councillor Maine. Any other questions or comments? I don't see any. Mr. Chapman, thank you very much. Well, you know, you have our support and we'll, as things get moved forward, we'll be sure to have that some help, support you in any and every way.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Thank you. All right, council. Next up on the agenda, we have a deputation from our community safety and wellbeing plan. Ms. Warner from Avil Consulting 2%. I'll remind you that you have 10 minutes to with the presentation and please stick around. We may have a few questions after.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you for having me here this evening. And so we will go as quickly as we can. Next slide, please. See how quick that is already? Okay, so in the next few minutes, we'll be looking at why we were doing the community safety and wellbeing planning, who the partners are involved in the planning, the process to date and the proposed process moving forward. The areas of risk identified across the county as well as in your local plan and what the next steps are. Next slide, please. So really, when we're looking at why we're planning, there's two pieces to this. There is the first part, which is the mandate. So under Bill 175 municipal councils are required to prepare, adopt and post a community safety and wellbeing plan on or before July 1st, 2021. And then the other piece is why does it make sense to do this planning? And so often we know that police find themselves responding to calls that are complex, but they're not criminal in nature and there's often no chargeable offenses. Just because the police and our emergency partners are available 24 hours a day does not mean that they're always the most appropriate community partner to be responding to these calls. So if done well, community safety and wellbeing unites partners on intersectoral strategies that address social development priorities. And if you look at the screen and you see that that bullseye, the outer ring is green. And the idea there is that if we focus our attention on social development priorities, those other rings will will shrink and that's what we want to see. So really, we're looking at addressing a root cause from an upstream approach. Next slide, please. What this slide is really highlighting is that diversity, equity, inclusion and involving those with lived experience really has underpinned the planning and will underpin the implementation of the strategies in the plan. Next slide, please. So these are your planning partners. And if you look at the lighter gray box, those are the proposed members or the membership. And the darker gray box is really the rules and the responsibilities. So if we move from left to right across the side, we have the GMCC and that that group has been in existence since beginning of this planning and been very active and really they're responsible for the oversight and the governance of the local plan. And then next you have the local community safety and wellbeing table that has not formed yet. That is scheduled to form after July 1st. So after the plan gets posted, should you choose to adopt into itself. And we can see that they're really going to be doing the heavy lifting. They're going to be leading the implementation of this plan. And so those are your community partners that are representative of those different areas of risk and we're going to get into that in the presentation as well as police as well as well as indigenous partners and municipalities and those lived experience, which is again key. And then you have the steering committee and there are five different planning groups. If you would include Barry, they they did their planning on their own, they would be a six. And so there the idea behind the steering committee is that it would be a countywide or regional steering committee and there'd be representation from each of the five groups and your Simcoe is is one group. So there'd be representation from our Simcoe at this at this committee. What I want to be clear about is I don't want the the name to throw people off. The governance of these plans and the direction and the going forward really will always lie at the local level with that GMCC. And really, the steering committee is really kind of tasked with some of the strategic oversight around some of the administrative processes and maybe some joint planning processes, because as you'll see in some upcoming slides, there's certainly some overlap in the areas of risk and different groups will be focusing on some similar issues. But again, the the approach and the implementation, that's very local to your community because each community is different. The resident needs are different. The assets are different, the partners are different. So I just wanted to make that distinction there that the governance will always remain with the GMCC. And then you have your advisory body and these are your subject matter experts. And they've been in part of this process at the beginning and they will continue to support this. They are reflective of the areas of risk. And they're often the ones that take the lead at some of those other bigger planning tables that already exist and are doing great work in this space. And then you have on the far right, other planning tables that aren't formally part of community safety and wellbeing, but they are working in this space. They got very similar objectives. So you want to make sure that we align with the work that's already underway so that there is no duplication and we can really just optimize what everybody is doing. Next slide, please. So what is the role of the municipalities? Well, in phase one, you're you're tasked with preparing and adopting and posting your plan should you choose to do so. And phase two, if you look at one through five there, it really speaks to working as equal partners alongside those other community partners that I mentioned, like police, community, social health services to support the implementation of the strategies that have been identified in your plan. And then maybe some of the reporting pieces back to the ministry, but those reporting pieces will really, the information and content will really be driven by the work that's being done at those local, at the local planning table and through the steering committee. Next slide, please. So how we approached phase one, we decided that we wanted to take an evidence based approach and have the areas of risk informed by data. And so we did that. That process is well detailed out, nicely detailed out in the plan. And then we wanted to make sure we got it right. So we did a very comprehensive stakeholder engagement consultation. It was, you know, through COVID, so it was all done virtually, but very, very good. And also being able to connect with 16 plus different groups that are, like I said, already working in this space, working on these areas of risk just to make sure that we got it right and to kind of, you know, get a pulse of what was already going on and where community safety and wellbeing could leverage some of that work, but then also bring something new and of value. And then lastly, lastly, we did a online residence survey that ran between mid February and mid March just to kind of get those final thoughts from residents who are in the community on how we move forward and what some more strategy should look like. And so that certainly informed the plan. Next slide, please. So these are the eight areas of risk that kind of popped out and came out through the data across the county. And so as I mentioned, the five planning groups, North Simcoe being one of them, each group landed on between three and four areas of risk. Interesting, but probably not surprising, all air, all groups identified mental health and addictions as a top priority to be working on. And so we certainly think that given that everybody is going to be working on that is a nice place to start after July 1st. Also, because we have some exceptionally strong mental health and addiction partners out there, organizations that are very interested in this work and have been very active in the formation of these plans and still will be able to support the work nicely. Next slide, please. So this is what your plan will be focusing on. And I don't want you to think that because you didn't identify some of those other ones that you saw on the previous slide that you're going to be missing out because what we know is that none of these areas of risk operate or exist independent of each other. So at that local table that you will form after July 1st, yes, you're going to have these three areas of risk represented, but you're not going to want to have the other ones at the table as well to inform the conversation. So you're certainly not missing So you're certainly not missing out on anything. You're going to be able to leverage some of the good work that might be going on in other communities, but this will be your focus. Next slide, please. So if we just kind of dig into the three a little bit, we see that around mental health and addictions, we're really looking at improving the equity, access and quality of mental health and addiction services across the continuum for residents in North Simcoe. And, you know, some of the things that kind of jump off the page, it's looking at what those core services are. And so we know that back in, I believe, March of twenty twenty, the provincial government released a roadmap to wellness, which is the Provincial Mental Health and Addiction Strategy. So they're at the point now where they're trying to determine what those core services are, those essential services that we should have available for all of our residents in every community. And we're going to want to make sure that we align with that. So this is a nice way to bring that provincial mandate home and and, you know, implement something locally, so that we make sure that we're we're offering what we should and could be doing. Also, increasing client and family engagement, increasing capacity around harm reduction strategies and trauma reform approaches to care, and then also helping people build their own, you know, capacity for self-managed wellbeing, their own mental wellbeing. And then also looking to support employers, especially when we're thinking of like small businesses that might not have the robust infrastructure or the programs around workplace mental health. Having something that we can support them with so that they can support their employees. And then the last one is a measurement piece. Next slide, please. So when we're looking at housing, we know that there's the ten-year affordable housing strategy that's well underway. We know that North Simcoe has a lot kind of in the works, and there's a lot of interest, and you've done a lot of work around this, and so we want to make sure that we support the work that is underway. But we also want to make sure that we don't miss the piece around housing stabilization. So it's one thing to to become housed and to successfully, then it is to successfully stay housed. And that's what we're seeing people falling through the cracks, is they're losing their homes. So what are those elements or components or pieces needed to have someone successfully stay housed? So we're going to flush that out in phase two. And then again, looking at increasing the capacity to best utilize some of those planning tools that you have at your disposal that will promote or support attainable or affordable housing. And then again, we always want to make sure that we align with any provincial or federal or even local strategy around homelessness. Next slide, please.
Two minutes, Ms. Warner.
Sorry?
Two minutes remaining.
Oh, okay, we'll go fast. So education. So when it comes to education, we're not just looking at the youth, although we're certainly a priority group, but we're looking at making sure that there's a clear pathway to education regardless of age, and we know that people are finding themselves having to upskill, second careers. And so as you can see, I won't go through them, but it's often around breaking down barriers. We want to focus on the skilled trade. We know that there is a, you know, a crisis looming with that. And then also engaging those that are underrepresented in education statistics right now. Next slide. I'm not going to spend too long on this, but this is kind of a visual of slide five, and it shows kind of how the bigger picture fits into it, where you fit into the bigger picture, but then also the autonomy of the local context. Next slide. Again, I won't spend too long on this slide. This is just showing some of the great intersectoral work that already exists in planning tables that align with the eight areas of risk. Next slide. So how do we measure this? We know that these are, you know, complex social issues, the pathway, the solutions are not linear, and that no organization, municipality or group can be held responsible for community-level wellbeing. But we know that if we work together on coordinated strategies, we can move the needle in the positive direction. And so that is really the intent of this work. Next slide. So the next steps would be to, if you should you do so, adopt and post your plan before July first. After July first, form that local table, and then that local table will help identify who will represent North Simcoe on the Steering Committee, and that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Ms. Warner. Greatly appreciated. Thank you. Any questions or comments with regards to the presentation? I apologize. Counselor Maine.
Like, what an amazing report. Thank you so much for everyone involved. I love seeing all the people involved, all the all of the familiar faces and names from Simcoe County. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time to. You really could spend a whole evening talking about all the different things in this report. So just quickly, a couple of quick questions. One, what happens to the current table, the safety and security table? Is this now going to be replaced? As it evolves into this new Community Safety Plan? So I'm seeing head nods from the mayor, so I'm guessing we're going to have multiple. So that's good. And the question is, how do we address some things that are related to community safety and wellbeing, but they're not really in the crime prevention thing? So livability things, which we're starting to kind of more define, you know, walkability, access to recreation programming, things like that. I saw some of the things you touched on. Social connectivity, social senior isolation, age friendliness. Is there other pieces to the puzzle that could perhaps be touched on? Say, road safety, water safety, winter safety. Those are safety things, but they're certainly not have a home in what this project is. I'm just curious if you could touch on how do we address some of those complementary or similar or parallel issues? Thank you.
Ms. Warner?
Thank you through Deputy Mayor to Counselor Maine. I, so no, we're not going to be replacing the Situation Table, because they have a very unique function that's looking at a highly acute elevated level of risk. This is different from that. But certainly some of those issues drive Community Safety and Wellbeing, and so we'll see, hopefully see some of those numbers decrease over time. As far as some of those other pieces that are not identified in the plan, those I would like to think will come in conversation when you form that local table. You mentioned livability. So livability pieces are, you know, people are housed, people have access to employment, people have access to education. So that is going to, I think, really be promoted through the work of of this plan. And when you get down to some of those safety pieces, the process that we undertook to land on these areas, we looked at crime severity indexes, we looked at, you know, OPP data, very like very extensive data. And so they actually didn't bubble up to the top. It doesn't mean that they're important, not important. And it doesn't mean that we won't get to them, but it meant that these were the pressing issues that we needed to address in the plan now. But as we start unpacking some of these things, you start getting into some of those, you know, very kind of distinct issues that or or points that we can work on. So I think that you're going to see some of that evolve in phase two through the conversations when we have more input and we're kind of getting into the detail.
Thank you so much. Yeah, road safety is kind of its own thing, you know. There's a whole division in the OPP that deals just with road safety. So appreciate all the effort and appreciate response.
Any other questions or comments with regards to this item? I don't see any. Thank you very, oh, Counselor, sorry, Mayor Strathern, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just want to take a moment to point a couple of things out here. First is that while representatives from each of the municipality and Inspector Haven sat on the GMCC, the bulk, the lion's share of the work was done by Ms. Warner, and it was its spectacular piece of work, to say the least. And she did that in concert with some of the resources from from the county, but she also took on certain things that give you a sense of how this process, if you're nimble and agile, as she seems to be, you identify opportunities and you get things done. One of them is that two-one-one's been around, and we've talked about it here, counsel, for a bit, but it's never really been used to identify street outreach, potential street outreach issues where you could divert somebody from the criminal justice system to in another direction. So Ms. Warner, who happens to know the people, two-one-one, engage with them, as well as the police departments who bought into this, which I think was interesting in its own right. And now two-one-one is providing an extended service so that you can get people to the right resources by just dialing two-one-one, describing the situation, and they will point you in the right direction. So there's a quick win to that at a systemic level, and it's something that just came out of the woodwork from a group of people instead of sitting in silos, talking about these things more broadly. So I just wanted to point that out, that the lion's share of this work has been done by Ms. Warner. You can see the quality of the report. It's very information, information dense. And the way it was presented in graphic form is really meant to get the real guts of the thing out and where people can see it rather than lost in text and worrying about white space and font size and all that stuff. So I really would like to thank Ms. Warner for all the work she's done. I'm hoping she'll stick around and lend some of her advice and experience and acumen to to the group as we move forward. I think she will. And again, thank you. It's a, it is a spectacular piece of work, and I I think it has a lot of opportunity, and I like to think of it to Counselor Maine's point about the the what do you call it, the table. Somebody help me out here. What do you call that? John?
Situation.
Situation. Well, thank you. That's at the acute, that's at the acute end. And what this, the well, safety and wellbeing plan is almost analogous to the Situation Table, where you bring a bunch of resources together, but they look at it from the environmental level, so that you're doing things so that the number of times the Situation Table meets hopefully goes away. Now, that's not like it happened, but certainly it will, it will finish. So you can almost think about it as a Situation Table for all those environmental factors, housing, mental health, drug abuse, unemployment, and so on. And and what's interesting is that a lot of this comes from the Community Index Wellbeing. It's sort of centered around that, which is interesting. That's a Canadian concept out of the University of Waterloo. It's got a lot of traction around the world. Here we are now looking at implementing it in our Community Safety and Wellbeing Plans. And we do have, as Carrie, Ms. Warner said, some excellent resources here that I'm hoping will agree to sit at the local table and and really help to make this thing just rock and roll, so to speak. So thank you, Carrie, very much. It's a fabulous piece of work.
Thank you very much, your worship. And Ms. Warner, if you want to stick around, we are going to pass the motion to accept this report. So I'll I'll move it forward, moved by Counselor Cunningham, second by Counselor, sorry, by Mayor Strathern, that council accept and adopt the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan as presented, and that staff be directed to publish the Community Safety and Wellbeing Plan on the town website in accordance with section one four seven of the Police Services Act, R S O one nineteen ninety, and that staff be directed to submit the plan to the Solicitor General by July first, two thousand and twenty-one, in accordance with section one four three of the Police Services Act, R S O nineteen ninety and Ontario Regulations seventy-five dash twenty. Any questions or comments with regards to this motion? Counselor Maine?
We're talking about housing, and I just wanted to make a quick plug on the housing survey. We're getting some results back. I think we hit a hundred survey results, and some of the responses are haunting. They're incredibly gut-wrenching, and it's it's quite upsetting. So we know housing is becoming an incredibly huge social issue, and we are obviously trying to do everything we can. So I just want to plug that. Please fill out the survey if you get, because it just furthers adds data to the process. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? You've heard the motion. All is in favor? So carried. How about that? Thank you very much, Ms. Warner. Appreciate your, all your hard work. We, council definitely echoes the Mayor Strathern's words, and we greatly appreciate all your hard work. Thank you so much. Next item up, we have reports that are withdrawn from the consent agenda, and first one is CSR dash two thousand and twenty dot twenty-one dash thirty-eight, entrance appeal nine hundred Hugo Avenue. A staff report CSR dash two thousand and twenty-one dash thirty-eight dated June second, two thousand and twenty-one regarding a request for a second entrance at nine hundred Hugo Avenue be received, and that council apply the entrance restriction as outlined in Bylaw number ninety-nine dash one nine, one seven six, and deny the request for a second entrance to nine hundred Hugo Avenue. I need a mover in a second to get this on the floor. Moved by Counselor Downer, second by Mayor Strathern. Now, I pulled this item with regards to, I felt that it was very important to hear from staff of why this was being denied. We had a member of our public resident put the appeal in, and I didn't feel it was just a consent item, and I believe it was at least worthy of some discussion. And I'd like, if I could ask Mr. Sobel to give us a Coles Notes on why this was turned down, that'd be fantastic. Thank you. Mr. Sobel, if you don't mind.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So yeah, this is, we had a request sent in for a second entrance at nine hundred Hugo. Essentially, we follow the the restrictions outlined in in the Bylaw for our entrance permits, and the way that Bylaw is written is it does not permit second entrances. You are allowed to have a new entrance in a situation where it's a better condition, a safer condition. However, the caveat within the Bylaw is the original entrance must be removed in order to approve the final entrance. So this was explained to the resident, and they provided the formal appeal. There's a few other concerns with it as well, but generally it falls back to the restrictions within the current entrance Bylaw.
Now, Mr. Sobel, there are other two entrance driveways on Hugo. Is those were just before the Bylaw, or, you know, all, I know they're quite older houses, is, you know, where the crest came is, could you explain why, why we would make this decision?
So any of those other ones on Hugo, I think they're further to the west. There is, there is a couple of them. Long before my time with the town, and I'm not certain if they were before or after the Bylaw was implemented. I can't say that we've had a number of other residents have a similar request in the past years, since both myself and Mr. Campbell have been at the corporation, and the the answer has been consistent to all of them. Two entrances are not allowed. Some of them have taken it to appeal to council, and council has held up staff's decision. Other times applicants have decided to drop it where it is and go no further with it. So in the time that both myself and Mr. Campbell have been here, it's been a consistent response on upholding the restrictions of the Bylaw.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sobel. Mr. Campbell, anything to add, sir?
No, I think Mr. Sobel has outlined the conditions and requirements of the Bylaw.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments with regards to Counselor Maine?
Oh, thank you so much for this. I would support staff's decision. Just a quick question on housing and second units or potentially third units, which looks like they're coming down the planning pipeline. So under a second units, if that person was to be building a second or auxiliary structure, then they would still just be permitted to one entrance? Just curious about if they were building housing. Thank you.
Mr. Sobel?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Counselor Maine, I mean, yeah, my understanding is it would kind of come down to the zoning also as well. But if it was a zone residential with a secondary unit, say in a basement or something like that, we would still restrict them to one entrance.
Thank you very much. Counselor Gordon?
Thank you very much. I, too, requested this report be pulled, and I sent a couple of questions in ahead of time. I don't see a, I mean, I understand that there's an existing Bylaw that prohibits these, and there are clearly, there are built homes in our Midland that have more than one entrance. There's one right by my house, by the hospital. So we know we can do it. If we always said no to everybody and there weren't none in town, I wouldn't even have any questions right now unless we were revisiting this Bylaw, but we've made exceptions. Clearly. So I don't think that it's fair for us to just, you know, now lean on the Bylaw and say no to this guy when he's gone through the process and articulated a case as to why he wants one. Whether there's validity to his concern and why he wants one to me is really not relevant to his property. I don't care if he paves his whole front line. Quite frankly, it's his. So the, what I'm concerned about are the three reasons in the staff report that urge us to support the staff report. And the third one is, I'm not really taking exception to the third one. The third one's fair enough. But the first two, the one about the wellhead being located, you know, somewhere in relation to this property, and by having an extra pavement, it's going to, you know, somehow potentially impact our water or add a little more runoff into the sewers. I mean, to me, that's seems like an inconsequential amount of water we're talking about from a little extra driveway. Where exactly is this wellhead? I have a couple of questions, but let's deal with the wellhead one first, please, in proximity to this person's.
Mr. Campbell?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, to Counselor Gordon. This is under the Source Protection Act regulated by the province of Ontario, so this house is in a wellhead protected area, as is most of Midland. So this is a provincial designation.
Okay. And the well, the wellhead location is at Dominion and Penetangine Road at the pump house, right? Kitty corner from your house. Yeah.
Okay, so this, that reason to support it, it basically covers all of Midland. You know, so to me, that's, that's a pretty vague, you know, piece of rationale to deny this guy on alone. So I'll just move on past that one. The next one speaks to the character of the neighborhood. And, you know, if if in fact we have bylaws or regulations that define character of neighborhood and compel people to then stay within those. Boundaries of the character of a neighborhood, then that would be a very valid, you know, reason to turn this appeal down. But what I guess I'm misunderstood about, I didn't know we had bylaws or regulations that define characters or neighborhood that this would somehow be, you know, in conflict with. And if we do have character of neighborhood bylaws, then, you know, where are they? And what do they do? They tell you you can't put a green colored garage door if you have a blue colored house or a blue colored front door? Like, how granular are these neighborhood character rules? And when did they start being applied to homes specifically along Hugo?
Mr. Campbell, can I answer?
Some of the new subdivisions do have architectural control in them, which are very specific as to the windows, the siding, the looks and feel. These older houses on Hugo are not under architectural control. You are correct. But when we look at neighborhoods, you know, you want to have a look and feel. And if every house wants to have two driveways, is that the look and feel that this neighborhood or other neighborhoods in town that we want to promote? In some cases, and I'm not saying with this resident, but in some additional driveway space leads to. You know, bylaw control issues on how they upkeep their properties and the storage of extra vehicles and junk and things like that. So there are, there can be property standard issues when there's a proliferation of driveways. So and that's why we have a bylaw that says each house gets gets one. So we do have a bylaw, and and staff are just, you know, working within that bylaw. And from a, you know, the president would love to have two driveways, and many people would love to have two driveways. But, you know, currently that isn't allowed. Council can overturn the bylaw. That's your prerogative. And if council chooses to overturn it. The that resident will be allowed that second entrance, and I'm sure we will have many more requests. And so it's always with any bylaw, it's, you know, it's one of those slippery slope issues. That's why this bylaw has been around for twenty years. It hasn't been enforced for all of those twenty years. I can't speak to it. I haven't been here for twenty years. And there are some houses with driveways, but some of those might have been prior to nineteen ninety nine, and maybe that was the reason the bylaw was formed. I don't know. But anyways, right now, the, you know, staff have put their recommendation forward, and the appeal is in front of council.
All right, thank you. Mr. Campbell, do you have a follow up?
Mr. Gordon, do you? Yeah, thank you. So it does make sense that, like, the bylaw, the fact that a bylaw exists and and this application does not align with the bylaw. To me, would have been a better rationale to put in this report. When I read these three rationale reasons for denying this. Especially when one is ambiguous, covers the whole town of Midland. The second one doesn't even apply because there is no architectural control. To me, it just seemed like we were maybe looking for reasons to deny this appeal when, like, the obvious one is right in front of us. There's a bylaw that if we chose to revisit the bylaw, then fair enough. I just, I guess I wasn't really happy with the three reasons that were put to deny this, and it it just kind of felt like. We're making stuff up as we go just to deny it, and I would rather have just seen you guys. This is just my own personal commentary. I would rather just see you come back and say conflicts with the bylaw. That's it. If you want to change the bylaw, then let's make that motion and rip the bylaw apart and revisit it. Rather than these kind of three, you know, little wishy washy, in my opinion, reasons for denying this. So that that's my only commentary. I just wanted to know why they were on that report. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you, councillor Gordon, your worship, and then I have councillor Post.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We have an official plan. We well, we do have, and we'll have a new one shortly. Once the appeals are all taken care of. Subsequent to the official plan, we have a zoning bylaw that will come out of that. We have zoning bylaws that came out of the former official plan. And we have a process called Committee of Adjustment where they look at variances around. Sidewalks and all the other things that are prescribed, whether you are one or two or three, and whichever items are prescribed within those categories. And a couple of things that are considered at the committee of adjustment are conformity. To the neighborhood and, sorry, conformity to the compliance, rather, to the to the bylaws and and how far out of whack you're going. And also conformity to the character of the neighborhood. That's one of the considerations that comes up in a committee of adjustment. As far as the as far as the the wellhead issue, this area has been identified as has. One of few in the in this region that have a water, source water issue. It's a bit north of here, but it still has been identified as such. If we allowed all the activities that are being asked for to hardscape the town of Midland. We'd have a serious runoff problem. We'd have a serious recharge problem with respect to the aquifers. So I would suggest to you that both one and two are valid good reasons, just not necessarily. Needed, I don't think they felt people felt we needed space to just to address them in that detail. To to the fact that we have a bylaw, you're absolutely correct. That, to me, is the reason why we won't, we won't, I won't approve the appeal. So, well, I I don't take exception with your points, councillor. I think that two points are actually germane in one to. The it's pretty clear that the changes at the high school have not really increased the hazards, particularly when you look at the. He's actually got more room between the driveways than he had before, so.
Thank you, your worship. Councillor Post?
That. I really just have a comment. I don't see it as a, I wouldn't think it'd be a problem to allow them. To have another driveway to make their life easier. If council chooses to stick to the bylaw, I I support that, too. We do have them for reasons, but I do want to point out that not too far up Hugo Avenue. We have, if you're talking about curbside appeal, there is a house with lots and lots of vehicles. I'm not to pick on anybody, but it is what it is. And if what something's good for one person, it needs to be good for all. That's all I really want to say.
Thank you, councillor Post. Any other questions, comments with regards to this item? Councillor Cunningham?
Yeah, just a question as to if this was a more permeable driveway, would it be something that would be? Something we would approve. I know that there's certainly the question of. The nature of the home, but it's that if you look at the front of the home, it's the one with the gravel on the yard. They've got a rock garden. And so that I guess that's the only question I do have on that from a standpoint of protecting the waterhead. If it was not a concrete driveway, would it have the same impact on on the waterhead if that were the case?
Mr. Sobel?
Thank you.
Mr. Campbell, sorry.
Andy, did you want to take this one? I saw you unmuted.
I saw that, too. Thank you.
Yes, from the bylaw does not address the permeability of the different types of material. But from an engineering point, a gravel driveway that people think is impermeable. Under an engineering standard, it is a point, it's got a point nine factor in it, which is impermeable. So technically, even a gravel driveway is deemed. Almost identical to a asphalt driveway from a permeability perspective. So if they put a, you know, left it as the grasp with the brick in it. Yes, there is some improvement, but in in general, this is where we would go if we start to look at a stormwater management utility. And looking at every property in the town that we look at what is their hard surfacing for a. A fee against each and every home. That's something we may be talking about in the next few years as we look at our stormwater management issues. But right now, the bylaw does not address. The material type of the driveway. It discusses entrances because the entrance is part of that. You know, again, the amount of traffic and people going on to the road. You, if every house had two entrances, it would actually be a worse traffic situation because of the potential for incidents. So.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Any other questions or comments with regards to this item? Councillor Ocheski?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I personally, if it was my decision to be made without knowing what I know now, I would approve this. And I think after listening to the conversation and hearing, reading the staff report, I think it's. It's easy to see why we're on this side of the table, and you guys are on that side of the table. We're kind of decision makers. And if we ran with every complaint we had or every request we had, the town would be a lot different of a place. So you guys help us from runaway situations, and I appreciate it a lot. I appreciate the report, and I'll support your recommendation tonight. Bye.
Any other questions or comments with regards to this item? You've heard the motion. All those in favor? All right, we have five, six. So moved. Thank you so much. Thank you very much, Ms. Sobel. Mr. Campbell, appreciate your time. Next up, we have item C S R dash two thousand twenty one dash thirty nine, request for draft plan extension, Midland Bay Estates. Three fifty one, sorry, two fifty one, three eleven, and three fifty three Fuller Avenue. That staff report C S R dash two thousand twenty one thirty nine, request for draft ten, it's extension. Midland Bay Estates dated June second, two thousand twenty one be received. And one, that staff grant an extension, a draft plan of subdivision pursuant to section fifty one thirty three. Of the Planning Act for the Midland Bay Estates Draft Plan of Subdivision. File number M D dash T dash zero 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 one two five one four two five one. Three eleven and three fifty three Fuller Avenue for a period of three years to June twenty eight, two thousand twenty four. And two, that staff approved the revised draft plan conditions as outlined in attachment number three. Any questions or comments with regards to this item? Oh, I apologize. I need a mover in a second to get this on the floor. Mover in a second, please. Moved by councillor Downer, second by councillor Ocheski. Any questions or comments with regards to this item? Councillor Gordon?
Thanks. I was just wondering if staff could address the letter that was submitted, the aforementioned letter from earlier today, earlier in our agenda. About some of the concerns that the proponent has, and if there's any wiggle room or, you know, any any compromise area. I just before the meeting, this wasn't part of the the public session. I know that the the mayor had some comments on there that I thought were quite about this. We were just talking informally. That I'd heard anyway, and I think they're important to share as part of this decision making. There was even. Anyway, we'll let the conversation ensue, but it sounds like there's some history here that, you know, is unbeknownst to me. And I'd like to hear a bit more about it from people who have been here longer than I have and.
Mr. Campbell, you care to comment, please?
Uh, Deputy Mayor, Michael Wania from Skelton, Drumwell, there are contracted professional planner right now. In the absence of not having any planners on staff, can turn it over to Mr. Wania to, you know, give a description of. The project quickly and can comment on on that that letter.
Sir, you care to comment? Thank you for joining us this evening. Appreciate your time.
Thank you. Yes, I I heard the comment. I know one of the comments. From councillor Gordon was relative to the history of the site. Unfortunately, I'm not intimately aware of the full history of the site. Other than the materials put in the staff in the report that were gleaned from the file in terms of the. Series of draft plan renewals and the revisions to the plan and so on. But I can address the some of the comments in the letter that was submitted subsequent to our report by M H B C. We were aware of some of these considerations that M H B C put forward. We do agree that they have not made any changes or requested changes to the draft plan of subdivision. And we are aware that they are progressing perhaps more expediently than in the past under new ownership relative to clearing. The conditions of draft approval and moving forward to to. Final approval. We also understand that there is an interrelationship with other development needs, including the Drum and Drive extension. And that is why, in fact, our recommendation for additional conditions applies only to a portion of the plan of subdivision to account for that. In terms of this second point in the letter, there's mention of the transition policies of the new official plan. We do have a bit of a difference of opinion there. I think we both have, however, recognized that those transition policies have been appealed by the applicant. As well as many other sections of the official plan. So the transition policies do not apply. And in fact, the old official plan still applies to this plan of subdivision as a result of those appeals. The in terms of what that means, though, in terms of our recommendations, our recommendations are not so much based upon the official plan. Either the new official plan or the old official plan, they're based upon provincial policy. And provincial policies apply to all planning act decisions without retroactivity. In in the case of the issues that we're dealing with here. So the issues regarding looking at groundwater resources, looking at natural heritage. And looking at archaeological resources that may be on the site are, in fact, elements of provincial policy requirements. That apply regardless of or not. Denies the old plan applies or transition policies applies. Those are requirements that should be met. Based on the fact that a draft plan extension is a planning approval that is being sought and potentially being granted. And any decision that affects a planning matter must show consistency with the provincial policy statement. In conformity with the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe. So while those issues do get touched upon in the new official plan, as well as in the old official plan. Our primary intention in making the recommendations for revised conditions relate to provincial policy, not the the two different official plans. And in terms of the draft approval extension, there are a number of choices. There there's the choice to refuse the extension, the choice to grant the extension. And then and the choice to grant an extension with revised conditions. We, although there were these issues related to the provincial policy statement and so on relative to these various matters. And the new official plan takes a somewhat different direction relative to the community in this area. Recognizing, however, that there is a transition provision there. We felt that rather than recommending against a renewal of the official plan or an extension of the last state effectively. We recommended instead that there be a modification to the conditions to add these conditions. And that that only applied to a portion of the plan of subdivision to try to reach some middle ground between nonapproval. And and or just an approval without addressing these issues. So our attempt was to find that middle ground. So I I mean, in their case, they are suggesting that the E I S is not required, the surface groundwater impact study is not required, and the archaeological assessment are not warranted. It it remains our opinion despite those submissions that they are warranted. And that we believe that applying them as conditions of renewal is a better approach than denying the extension altogether. And then if if that were done, then that would force the issue in terms of a new submission and new studies and so on. We think they could, you can take advantage of all the work that has gone on before and not lose all of that. But just update the plan relative to these issues. And ideally, these studies end up making some improvements to the plan and or conditions that would apply in terms of a subdivision agreement. However, if they did result in some significant concerns with the subdivision, then perhaps that's appropriate. Rather than not having done the studies and not found the concerns, it's if there are concerns raised by the nature of. An archaeological assessment or surface and groundwater impact study or a scope D I S. Then those are valid concerns, and it's good that we did catch them. So that that those are our recommendations, and that is a very brief response to the letter. But there is clearly a difference of opinion on.
Thank you very much, sir. Councillor Gordon, did you have a follow up before I went to Mayor Strathern?
Only to thank you for that input and insight. It it makes total sense to me, right? But there's no rational argument I could come up with that would suggest that we should dismiss those three important studies. So I won't even try.
Well said, councillor Gordon. Mayor Strathern?
Thank you, Deputy.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you to Mr. Wania. There've been some significant changes to the Greater Golden Golar, I always trip my tongue over the Greater Golden Horseshoe Growth Plan. Through the, through the recent government's uh changes to various acts. But the provincial policy statement has been in play with not too many significant changes for some time now. My, I believe, and my understanding is that always a condition in there has been an environmental impact assessment. Am I correct on that?
Through your worship, uh the, to be quite hon- honest, it's my understand. It, it, I was frankly surprised that an environmental impact study hadn't been required in a previous extension request. Because it is a requirement under the provincial policy statement. Now, in terms of the growth plan, there have been revisions to the growth plan over time. And fortunately for the applicant, the growth plan has different policies that apply within settlement areas versus outside of settlement areas. If this had been outside a settlement area, you could have a total prohibition on development on a site like this because of the potential of significant features. Within a settlement area, it's different, but the growth plan says you shall apply the provincial policy statement. And hence our recommendation that a scope D I S be undertaken and that could result in additional mitigation measures. Uh however, it, it, it uh may not result in, you know, the total removal of development approvals. That could occur, for example, outside of a settlement area.
Thank you, sir. You had a follow-up. Your worship?
Please, Deputy Mayor, um through you to Mr. Wania. Uh Counselor Gordon referred to a conversation about history and really you've captured that the conversation was around timelines and you captured that in your report. And if we look at uh the timelines, the, this, this was originally approved in two thousand and four. May twenty, two thousand and seven, it was approved for seventy-nine, red line, the draft was approved for seventy-nine units, June two thousand and eight, it was sold. Uh we go to May twenty-ten, there's an act request for a three-year extension. Takes us out to twenty thirteen and twenty thirteen, we have again an extension of uh three-year extension. And right in around there, if I'm not mistaken, PPS really sort of formed. The genesis was right in that two-ten, two-thirteen period. Then we go to twenty sixteen, uh and we're asked for a five-year extension. Now, I was on council, as was Counselor Chesky, I was Deputy Mayor Ross. As was Counselor Maine. And at the time that that request was asked for. It was made very clear to Mr. Robinson that the world would likely change significantly given what was coming down the planning pipe. With respect to natural heritage being a little somewhat more stringent, et cetera, than what you might find in the uh PPS. And so, miss, uh it was, I categorically stated that it would not be prudent to come back. For an extension where uh that environment to change, which it has and. And yet, here we are. Now, in the letter where they're disputing uh. Their, their letter subsequent to the, the report being issued, they basically are implying that they're within a hair's breadth. Of being able to finish and present a final draft for approval. If that being the case, if I look at an environmental impact statement, it, it requires four seasons, if I'm not mistaken, to do, to do the work, right, right?
Through the Deputy Mayor, uh relative to the E I S, we had the choice of recommending either a fully I S. Or a scope D I S. With a scope D I S, there's some ability to not require the four seasons of work. What, what we hope to do relative to the scope D I S, again, sort of like our recommendation to begin with. Is find a solution that is a middle-of-the-road solution and not, you know, the entire thing, but something that works. That would appropriately address any concerns or issues, do the required studies. There are, one of the issues that could arise. In a scoped environmental impact study is uh, is threatened and endangered species, birds and so on, that might utilize the property. If the, there's still a window of opportunity to do that work over the next few weeks, so I'd urge the applicant to initiate that immediately. In the absence of that, uh there are some possibilities of utilizing other data and sort of theoretical data as to whether or not those are issues. But there's still a window of opportunity. If this had been an issue where we were dealing with wetlands and amphibian habitat. I'd be much more concerned about the timing, uh but the applicant is aware of our recommendation. It would be prudent for them to engage immediately in terms of some of the windows that remain relative to breeding birds and so on.
Follow up, your worship?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So just to follow through with that line of argument, it's, if we were to grant this, it would be twenty years of extensions. Twenty years of tying up municipal um sewage capacity, twenty years of tying up water capacity and so on. They had five years, starting in twenty sixteen, uh the argument, I think I've heard on occasion, is while the market wasn't robust. While the remarket is red, smoking hot right now, and this show, shows no signs of abating. So I guess my point is, if they're that close and we can do a scoped environmental assessment, would it be reasonable? To truncate the timeline to, say, eighteen months? Because frankly, these guy, this, this group have had. An enormous amount of time to do this and frankly, haven't, haven't come through. And I think that if they're that close to finishing, I would like to suggest that they, they are capable of doing this within eighteen months and should. And that counts this count, and I would be prepared to put a motion on the floor for an amendment to uh reduce the timeline to eighteen months. If I can get a second here.
I need a second here. I, I see Counselor Chesky seconds that. So we have an amended motion on the floor um that we, uh Madam Clerk, do I, can we continue the conversation? Or do we need, uh, we have a mover and a second for the amended motion. Counselor, uh Mayor Strether moved and Counselor Chesky second. Can we continue the conversation or do we have to move to the eighteen months uh moving forward?
I believe if council would like, um, or actually Mayor Strether has moved the motion to amend, so the council can deal with the amendment to eighteen months.
So they meant, we're now discussing the amended motion. It is on the floor. Um so I'll, just so you're aware, that council granted extension of draft plan of subdivision pursuant to section fifty-one. Thirty-three of the Planning Act for the Midland Bay Estate Draft Pan- Plan of Subdivision, file number M D dash T dash zero 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 one. For two five one, three one one and three fifty-three Fuller Avenue for a period of eighteen months. So um we'll have to go to December twenty-eight, sorry, December twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-three. And I apologize, two thousand and twenty-two, is that right? My math right? No, two thousand and twenty-three, I apologize. December twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-three, and that council approved the revised draft plan condition as outlined in attachment three. I have a mover and a second, Mayor Strether, and second by Counselor Chesky. Counselor Gordon, you have a question or comment with regards to this item?
Now, what happens if they don't, if eighteen months comes around and they come back again? When, when does this end and, and what happens if it ends?
Sir, you care to answer, Mr. Lannetta?
Yes, through the Deputy Mayor to Counselor Gordon, uh if they, that, in theory, they have the ability to apply. For yet another extension. Um and then council can make a determination on whether that extension would be appropriate or not appropriate. Uh by all indications, the applicant has, part of their submission in, to the town in terms of arguing for this. Is that they are very close and as, as being pointed out by the mayor, there is an opportunity to address these remaining concerns. In a timely fashion, so they should be able to achieve this within the eighteen-month period if they are serious about moving forward. Uh given the history of the file, given the number of lapses, uh or, or extensions of the lapse date and the latitude given. Uh if they don't meet this requirement, I think the town would have good standing to uh potentially refuse. Uh an extension in the future.
Thank you very much. And uh I just want to correct the record for, the date is uh that we extend the period to December twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Just so everyone's aware, okay? Uh any other questions or comments with regards to this item? Counselor Maine?
Thank you. Uh, uh very much appreciate the discussion. I came in here being like, I'm not going to approve or extend this no matter what. Uh I think the eighteen-month is a very nice compromise. It's a kind of a last resort. We'll give you one last go. Um can we just talk about the lapsing? If we do let it lapse, that's not appealable uh in any ways. We have the final say on a draft plan. Is that correct?
Mr. O'Driscoll?
Uh through the Deputy Mayor to Counselor Maine. There are, there are some differences of opinion on how the lapse date works and whether or not it can be appealed and so on. I have been involved in hearing what's being appealed. I, uh, an extension, a refusal of an extension, it cannot be appealed. Once it's lapsed, that's absolutely clear. Once it's lapsed, it can't be appealed. But there is a provision under the Planning Act to appeal conditions right up until final approval. So in theory, an appeal could be launched. Tomorrow before the lapse date uh arises relative to conditions, uh then there's a debate about what happens relative to the lapse date at that point.
I just love planning stuff. It's never an easy answer, one way or the other. Um yeah, I, I'm, I wasn't comfortable in twenty sixteen extending it. And I'm not very comfortable extending it now. Um I do think uh the mayor put forth a very reasonable suggestion of an. Kind of a one last, we'll give you one last go to finalize this draft planned because the plan realistically is, is becoming out of date. It's, and that's why if we're going to be locking into a contract, you know, you want this to be check, you know, be up. A modern twenty-twenty design and not a two thousand and four, perhaps outdated design. So, you know, I'm still kind of hesitant towards uh supporting. Any extension, but thank you so much for the explanation. It was very informative.
Any other questions or comments with regards to this item? You've heard the motion, uh the amended motion, all those in favor? One, two, three, four, five, so six carried. Thank you so much. That's carried item. Next page. Next up, we have, thank you very much for your time, sir. Appreciate it. And everyone, Mr. Campbell, next up, we have uh. That staff report CSR dash two thousand twenty-one dash forty-one Goose Management Framework dated June second, two thousand twenty-one. Be received for information purposes and one, that councils support an amendment to the Animal Control Bylaw. Two thousand and nine dash eighteen to permit dogs off-leash in town parklands during low usage and off-peak hours. Two, that council support the installation of signs at Little Lake Park, the mid-town harbor. Golly Park and Pete Peterson Park to educate the public, referring to upcoming parks and trails by law. Two thousand and twenty-one XX prohibiting the feeding of geese. Number three, that council direct staff to apply for all necessary Canadian Wildlife Service permits to have canines. Scare harassing call geese as per the regu- uh relevant les- legislation. I apologize. Uh I did a mover and a second with regards to this item. Moved by uh Counselor Gordon, second by uh your worship, or sorry, Counselor Cunningham. And uh any, I'm not sure who pulled this item, but Counselor Cunningham?
Thank you. I did not actually pull this item. Someone had already pulled this one. Uh first of all, I want to thank staff for bringing this to council. Mr. Harvey Mann will be very pleased to see that this is happening and I appreciate that. I have a real concern about item one, though. That dogs would be permitted off-leash during low usage and off-peak hours. From the standpoint of the fact that just because it's low usage does not mean it wouldn't be small children who can end up in very unfortunate situations. And I just wondered whether there's a, that's a necessary component of this. I, I don't think I could support, well, I could not support that in, in this um recommendation. Just from that standpoint of small children and dogs and, and that my concerns for safety. I don't know if there's a response to that, or I just wanted to say that piece.
Mr. Campbell, care to comment?
I'll pass it to uh Dylan Flanery. Uh he's uh had some experience at other uh parks in this situation.
Mr. Flattery, Flandery, sorry, I apologize.
No, it's okay.
Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you, thank you. Um Deputy Mayor, uh through yourself to uh Counselor Cunningham. Yeah, I have experienced directly this in the past. We've used this, um I've seen it used in other uh parks and locations and. There were actually dogs even used here specifically in Midland in the past, uh back in roughly two thousand thirteen, two thousand fourteen. And there were no reported incidents at all. Um safety concerns uh in the town of Midland specifically. And then in other locations that I've seen it used, uh there really were, uh, uh, safety concerns were not really an issue. Um having dogs off-leash, um the hours noted are particular to the, the lowest usage hours um in the parks. And really, it's a recommendation because there are three months of the year called molting season where you cannot. You, you're not able to obtain permits to really make use of any option. So during those three months of the year, uh your hands are somewhat tied. Uh this is a way to get public involvement. And public education. Um and then there are at least some methods being applied through that three-month period.
Now, is there a, is there a timeframe for what, what exactly is the low uses and up-peak hours? Is there a certain time that that occurs or is this discretionary? That's, I think, the part that uh concerns me. And maybe I'm speaking for Counselor Cunningham, but if we allow the public to determine what that time, oh, I didn't, there was nobody around. So I just let the dog at two o'clock in the afternoon. Is, is there a timeframe with regards to whatever, what, what you, we consider. Low usage and off-peak hours?
Uh yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um so the report specif- uh specifies the low usage hours actually. Uh to be aligned with um the seasonal open, uh open hours. So between April first and October thirtieth would be uh in the morning, five AM to eight AM. In the evening, eight PM to eleven thirty PM when the park closes. Uh and then in the winter season. Extended somewhat in the morning, five AM to nine AM, and then shortened in the evening since the parks close earlier, so seven PM uh to ten PM. So you could um specify and clarify the hours in the amendment and then post relevant signage. Um so that you've properly defined uh those, those timeframes that it's permitted.
Counselor Cunningham, I apologize. I cut you off. You had a follow-up?
Yes, thank you. I, I guess part of my concern is, I, I know we did have two dogs that had been, I don't know if you handpicked the dogs. Or how that worked, but you know, some dogs are much more trustworthy around children and trained and used to them. And I know that certainly early morning, kids are, are sometimes very early risers. So is there some level of restriction of what type of dog can be off-leash and, or other ways to, if this. Becomes a challenge, how, I just, I don't like to wait for it to become a challenge, but is there a way to? Select the type of dog that is allowed. Uh it just doesn't feel like there's any kind of restriction to. Whether the dog is going to be, you know, just frolicking quietly by near the owner or whether it could be dashing through the park.
Mr. Campbell?
Uh through Mr. Chair to Counselor Cunningham, in the past, the, the town hired a, a company or a person. That had dogs that were well-trained uh to provide this service. In the report, Dylan has, you know, uh talked to some current. Dog trainers and I guess, and it might be a ten to fifteen thousand dollar cost to uh retain professional dog. Sport for this uh use. For this year, we haven't put that in our budget, uh so we, we have no money to go or approval to go and hire. Uh trained dogs for this year. So this uh off-leash uh. Option one or recommendation one is kind of that intra-measure and then if council wishes, uh if they said, well, this year. We don't uh wish to have every off-leash dog out there, maybe we wait till the budget next year. We look at the budget consideration and if having uh an additional cost to ru- in the parks to hire uh dogs. Because we believe that is uh safer, uh using, maybe not using your words, but implying your, your words. That is an option for council. Uh so what I think staff and Dylan were looking for is, the report talks about, you know, maybe we could have professional trainers in the future. Uh pending budget, it, what could we do? What could we do today? In the report, there are many options that the town has tried in the past, other municipalities have tried. SSEA has a whole attachment to the document that there is no good real solution here. So if council was to be concerned about every dog or the type of breed, we're not prepared today to deal with breeds of dogs. I would recommend council just remove that portion of it. We can still put signs up around feeding the dogs and then deal with professional dog trainers if council wishes through the budget process next year.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Counsel Ochesky. Oh, I, I apologize, Counsel Ochesky, Counsel Cunningham, did you have a follow-up?
Yes, please. So, and I appreciate all the work that you're putting into this night, and that, that could have a, a positive result on the geese, but I would like to propose an amendment to the motion to remove item one.
We have an amendment on the floor. Do we have a second or, or do we want to continue the discussion with regards to? Did you have a second or?
I
I don't see anybody. Counselor Main? Counselor Main?
Thank you.
So amended motion set, moved by Counsel Cunningham. Second by Counsel Main, that we remove item one. So the council supported the installation, so we're going to remove that council support the amendment to the Animal Control Bylaw 2009, 2009 dash 18 to prevent dogs off-leash in town parkland during the low usage and off-peak hours. So we're going to refer to this amended motion. Any question? I have Counsel Ochesky, then I have Counsel Gordon, then Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is a topic that's been near and dear to my heart for my entire time on council. We've had some great conversations, some good laughs and great discussions with other municipalities. There's something about this off-the-leash dog thing that sits well with me is the time constraints. Don't bring your kids to the park at 5:00 AM until 8:00 AM or 8:00 PM until 11:30 when the park closes, and you won't have to worry about off-leash dogs. And I personally see the geese as a, a risk to the kids, and I might, it might sound funny me saying that, but I mean it. If, if you've ever seen a goose that has been threatened or feels threatened, they're, they're scary as well, and also their excrement is poison. So by having dogs, get them off of our beachfront, it also stops them from excreting as much poop and less chance that kids will get their hands on that and maybe ingest that stuff as well. So they also pollute the water with the same poop. And so that's a, a risk to our kids as well. So there, there's more risk to this and, and, you know, just visualizing an off-leash dog and a small child, to me, as an upcoming parent, I, I totally get the concern, but I, I see other risks as well that, that make me want to support this. And I do like the time constraints, and I, I will support, assuming that this amendment doesn't pass, I would support the staff recommendation. Thank you.
Counselor Gordon?
Thanks. I'm, I'm also very happy to see this report come. I took plenty of calls from different residents, Mr. Mann as well, very passionate about this. And really glad to see the options and the fact that, you know, many of them were reviewed and recommended. You know, some work, some haven't, some are going to cost us money. I too share the concern about off-leash dogs in the park. It's, you know, to quote Mr. Campbell earlier, it's a slippery slope. I'm all for modifying some of our bylaws and making things a little less restrictive and cutting red tape. I just think my experience is, and I'm a dog owner and have been for decades, even with my dog who loves chasing geese, you know, if one ever turn around and decide to take a crack at her, she's going to lose. But she, she thinks she's the toughest thing in the park, you know, until she sees a squirrel, and then, then she's off that direction. There's nothing I can say or do to get her back. So, and I have a good dog, but any dog is potentially a dangerous dog around kids or anybody else, even other animals. You never know what's going to trigger them, and a leashed dog is a safe dog in our park environment. So I would totally support a measly 10 or 15 grand to hire the professionals to come who have dogs that obey them and will do their job and keep the, you know, the geese harassed. I would totally support that. I think we can find 10 or 15 grand to do that this year rather than wait, you know, wait another year. That's my personal opinion. I'd like to get some support on that one. I, I'm going to support this amendment that we pull this off-leash, not, not as a, as a vote of non-confidence in our residents and that they don't have the ability to police their own dog and manage things. It's not that at all. I just think we, instead of, you know, deferring this responsibility and the 10 or 15 grand to the professionals who are trying to download it on, on maybe good-willing, you know, well-meaning residents who could have an accident or a dog bite or something else could happen, or a goose could turn around and attack the dog, or heaven knows what, what could happen. I'm not going to paint a doom and gloom picture, but I would like to see us do this properly. I would like to see us clean up the inevitable feces that's going to be there and down at the town duck. We're never going to make the geese not come here. We have a giant lake, they've been coming here long before we have, and it's just, it's going to happen. We can't eliminate them. We can deal with them, we can coexist, we need the park to be busier, more people down there, they don't like the people. We need more activity, you know, which is going to come post-COVID, and we need to be able to clean up the feces that, that happens. And we need to be able to harass them with professionally trained animals without calling them and, you know, killing their babies and things like that, that, you know, sometimes I think, hey, that's a great idea, but, you know, when I sit down and think about it, it's not cool. So I support Counsel Cunningham's, because this was her thing to brought it to council, unless I support this amendment to, to say no to the well-meaning citizen dogs, and let's, let's engage professionals to come and help us out and see how that goes.
Mayor Strathern?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I'm inclined to lean towards what Counselor Ochesky was saying, that there are times, these times of the day, but I can't see that you have people down, for example, at Pete Peterson, which has a significant goose issue, Golly. In fact, I see people down there with dogs, and when nobody's looking to let the dog off-leash anyway. One thing I do know from, from my own neighborhood is that if a goose, goslings sees a dog, they leave, on a leash or not, they just get out of Dodge because it represents a certain, significant threat to the goslings. As far as, as, you know, the geese being here, the report identifies two different groups of geese. Transients, they're flying north, they're flying south. They land in the lake, they stay there, they're here for a little bit, and then they're gone. And typically, they're gone by mid-April, and they're heading further north. And then you have resident geese, and they are a giant race that was almost extinct in the six, late 50s, early 60s, and a fellow named Harry Lumsden, another guy named Hanson, working to keep them viable and found a remnant flock in, in Rochester, I believe. And I know Harry very well, he worked two doors down from the natural resources, and I would say that Harry is one of the most loathed men in, on the globe. I know people in, in, in St. Anne's, England, who absolutely hate Canada geese because nobody can go near their swimming pools, ponds, because we would capture them and move them off to places like England, giant race. So specifically, these animals that are causing our problems with respect to swimming are a giant race of geese. They're not the transients. I don't know many kids that want to go swimming in Little Lake, the end of, and, you know, the middle of, middle of December, when you see any transients going back south. It's the local geese, and the way you deal with local geese and their goslings in particular, and when they're molting, you have a physical barrier, or you have something that poses a threat. And if you control, and if you channel the, the dogs off-leash to be there at a time when you're minimizing the presence of vulnerable individuals potentially, then I don't see that it creates necessarily an issue. So I understand the concern. I mean, if it was somebody with a pit bull, that's one thing, if it was somebody with a chihuahua, that's another, but then they'd be mental to let the chihuahua running around first place, so. So I think I, I, I don't think, I, I will support the motion as is. I'd also like to see staff focus on some of the things that are going to deal with non-resident, sorry, resident giant race, because they're the ones causing all the problems down in the harbor. Golly, Pete Peterson, and Little Lake Park. It's not, it's not the transients, and, and there's a different approach to dealing with those than some of the things that are outlined here. But I, I don't think I can support, although I'd like to, in a way, I don't think I can support the, the amendment.
Thank you, Worship. Any other questions or comments? Counselor Main?
First comment is just to really appreciate the staff's sensitivity. I like how they didn't come up guns blazing that we're going to get rid of all the geese, and they were very sensitive to the concerns of, around this issue. So very much appreciate the report. Thank you so much for that. I guess I'll support the amendment just because over the last year with the pandemic, we were getting a lot of comments and concerns from residents regarding off-leash dogs nor, in normal hours. So that's, again, the concern is that we kind of already have a little bit of a off-leash issue in some areas, so not, don't want to further create a further situation. So I, I'll support the amendment, and, but I do understand the appreciation around the hazing and the harassment or whatever. It did make note in the report around potential falconry services, and I know the Y Marsh, they have a lot of hawks, and they have these hawk trainers and falcon trainers. So that's perhaps an organization that they might have staff with that specialized skill service. As we're talking about, all options are on the table, but dog leashes and whatnot, so that, so it's, I'll support the motion at that, and I'll save a comment for the general report. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Main. Any other questions or comments with regards to this item? Counsel Post?
So if this goes through, does this mean we're amending the leash bylaw for the specific areas of Midland?
Nope. If this, right now, we're on the amended motion, so it's only two and three. Number one has been removed. So we're voting on that council supported the installation of signage, signage at Little Lake Park, the town of Harvard, Golly Park, and Pete Peterson Park to educate the public referring to upcoming parks and trail by law prohibiting the feeding of geese. And number two, that council directs staff to apply for all necessary Canadian Wildlife Service permits to have canines scare, harass, call geese as per relative legislation. That's what we're voting on. That's what's on the table as of right now.
Deputy Mayor, if I could just interrupt for a second?
Yes.
We've put, the amendment is on the floor, it was moved and seconded. So I believe you need to call the vote on the amendment.
Okay.
And then?
Yeah, and if it's turned down, we revert back to the main motion, is that correct?
Yes.
Wonderful.
And I think you need a mover and a second for the main motion. I'm not sure if.
I have a mover and second, but we're, we're removed, where the amended motion was moved by Counsel Cunningham and seconded by Counsel Main.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So you've heard your amended motion, all is in favor? I see three. Four?
I think that's a question more than a
Sorry, I apologize.
The Counselor Post is asking another
Counsel Post, you had a question?
No, sorry, my mic wasn't off, I was talking myself.
Okay, no problem. So I'll call the question again, all is in favor of the amended motion? So we have four, Madam Clerk, against? Is also four, so that's a defeated motion. We revert back to the original motion, which is moved by Counsel Gordon, seconded by Counsel Cunningham. But do I need to read it again? That council support the amendment of the Animal Control Bylaw 2009 dash 18 to prevent dogs off-leash in town parkland during low usage and off-peak hours? And then the other two amendments I just read out is Counsel Main?
Oh, thank you so much. Two, two, two quick comments. If we're going to be putting out signage about don't feed the seagulls, perhaps we should include other birds. Our seagulls in Little Lake Park are very fond of french fries, which they shouldn't be. They should not know what a french fry tastes like, but they're delicious, so they love them. But also, the more serious question is, we're talking about naturalizing shoreline or partially naturalizing shoreline or installing tall grasses or shrubs, and that's, things like that. Is that option still considered for some of the parks for, for this, or is that not as effective? Thank you.
Attorney Flannery?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through you to Counsel Main. The habitat modification option is not necessarily a recommendation in this report at this time. They can be costly, now they're natural in human options, human options being things like fencing. But those really can ruin the, the atmosphere of a park or harbor. And the natural options, you know, can be things like removing grasslands, and then what are you replacing it with? You're, you're having potential for mulch to be replacement. You can replace things with pavement. It's really to remove the food source is the goal, one. Two, the second goal of that approach would be to create a habitat that the geese do not feel comfortable in. If they are in their feeding area and cannot see a clear line to safety, and to them, safety is water, then they will not use that area. But that means then you are either planting things, shrubs, trees, or you are not mowing. So I know we do have some no-mow zones for another separate reason here, but, but again, those have been somewhat strategically selected for, for more non-use or focal areas of a park or a harbor. So to take Little Lake, for example, any of those options, really, your, your worst part in Little Lake or location is the beachline area. So habitat modification really would be things like putting a fence along that whole beachline and separating the grass between the beach or not mowing that grass all opposing the beach. But then that, that changes again the feel of the area. But those are, you know, some of the options there in terms of habitat modification. I will add as well, just with my background coming from where I've come from, I, I've come from a park that saw 46 million visitors a year, and that's not visits, that's visitors. Some of them came every day. I spent about five years there, and in that time, I cannot recall a single safety concern with a dog off-leash in the, a resident. And again, that's with 46 million visitors annually. I can recall several instances to Counselor Ochesky's point of geese having safety concerns with small children. And I, I just wanted to add that those hours of low usage were, were specified, especially in the evening hours. There's not generally smaller children in parklands at that time. And then very early hours where it's less likely to have small children visiting the park as well. So just wanted to add that as well, and, and hopefully answers your question, Counsel Main.
Thank you very much. And I will add that, like, in my eyes, the responsibility of a dog owner is the owner itself, of, of, the owner is the dog. If you don't feel that you can let the dog off the leash and not control it, then you shouldn't be doing, going anywhere with that dog and taking it off-leash. It, it comes down to the person that owns that dog, it's responsible for it. And if, you know, a few dogs can help, help with the geese problem on the off-hours, I personally support that wholeheartedly, and, but we, we try to put blame, push blame on others, and the fact is, the owner of that dog is responsible, plain and simple. So Counsel Gordon?
Well, thank you, to your point, then. I mean, people are going to let their dog off-leash in the park, do so at your own peril. You will be responsible for anything that happens with that off-leash dog that you didn't anticipate, whether provoked by another off-leash dog or another animal. So, you know, the problem is, we're blessing this as a, as a municipality, and I suspect we'll find ourselves named in whatever action that is, because we're allowing this to happen now. So we'll deal with that when and if it comes to us, you know, that's just the way it is, everything has liability. My next concern, then, if we're going to go ahead with the, just let the, let the dogs out, Midland did, Midland did. Let's go with the sweeping attachment option, 15 to 30K. Clearly, no matter what we do to harass them, there's still going to be excrement everywhere, and that's largely what got this whole ball rolling, was how disgusting the dock area is, how much time and effort is involved in cleaning it. Little Lake Park and, and the less-used park like Pete Peterson Park that no one swims in. People largely don't even use, it's pretty gross. And then the out-of-the-way park over in Sunnyside, which, you know, that's, that's about the only place to swim, and only for a while, till the weeds hit the, the surface. So my concern is, we haven't addressed cleaning. And I understand there's a quote in here for some 70 grand for a vacuum machine. Probably look those kinds you see driving around Toronto sucking up things off of the sidewalk or the curbs and gutters. I think Midland would be well, you know, wise. That would be a good investment for us to have to clean our town anyway, because they could use it sometimes, certainly a lot easier than the old-fashioned way. However, I'm not suggesting we try and dig up seventy K right now to buy a sucker. So perhaps a fourteen to thirty K drag around attachment that goes on whenever many pieces of equipment right now, they could go and at least clean up. The feces that inevitably is gonna be in these more well-used parks. I'd like to see, I don't know if we need an amendment on that, but I'd really like to see us. Get something like that for this year so the community can actually feel like we've moved the ball forward. And I I know there's there's ways to find money for it. I suspect there will be a little little bit left over after a meeting we're having tomorrow. Um, because there's an unused stream. There's places to find money. I know the town can. We just need to, uh, and here I was, the guy trying to get the zero percent tax increase. But we really need to do something about the poop. So I I'd love to hear a bit more about this uh, option that's in the report about the sweeper or whatever that is attachment fourteen to thirty K.
Mr. Campbell?
I'll pass it on to uh, Mr. Flannery to respond.
Mr. Flannery?
Uh, through Deputy Mayor, um, to Counselor Gordon. Yeah, staff has looked at several different options that are available out there um, for that type of an approach. Um, because, you know, like you said, at the end of the day, it's it's not a realistic goal to eliminate a a geese population. In the end, there will be geese here. Um, especially with with surrounding uh, wetlands, the Y Marsh, for example. Um, you're just going to have them around in the area. You will not be able to eliminate them. So having a piece of equipment like that can help in terms of the cleanup because it will be needed regardless of what other approaches you take. So there are some uh, options out there and available, like you you said, um, the street cleaners or sidewalk cleaners, so to speak. Are the full uh, machines that are driving around. You've seen in in Toronto. Um, there's other municipalities around Markham uh, that have them as well. Those are the more expensive pieces. They um. Are a full unit in of itself. And, you know, yeah, they can be also used for um, both the attach attachment or or a uh, full piece of equipment could be used for other things as well. Cleaning trails, cleaning your brand-new sidewalks downtown, uh, for example. But uh, yeah, there are even electric options. Yeah, that we've just recently uh, uh, had a demo on a a few different options. So there are uh, you know, um, some machines essentially that that are small and you you can even walk behind. And and they travel at about nine kilometers an hour, so it's slow-moving, but uh. They're they're green and friendly, um, but they can be, it can be time-consuming to clean up. Really, any of these, any of the attachments to the machines out there, it's time-consuming, uh, without a doubt to make use of any of them. But uh, yeah, some of our sidewalk plow machines, for example, there are attachments available. Uh, you know, blowing machines or um, sucking machines or or attachments that can go on our existing uh, plow equipment now. Uh, so those are options, uh, definitely uh, dependent on uh, on budget approvals though.
Now, uh. How quickly could, if we were to uh, approve this item, uh, I'm here, I'm hearing an amendment coming. Um, how quickly could we get one of these machines? Or would it be, you know, if we're, we can't get it till October, November this year anyway, it'd be worthwhile to add it to the budget and start fresh for two thousand twenty-two? But uh. Do we have any rough idea what the timeframe would be to to uh, are these readily available or are they uh, an item that takes time?
Uh, thank you, W, Mayor. Um, it would depend on the machine. There are um, supply issues really across the board. Uh, with with every piece of equipment we've been ordering recently. Um, a lot of them COVID-related, obviously, the delays. You know, some some machines, I I would suspect um, this option would not be something that we could. Even given an appropriate budget approval right now, uh, tomorrow, uh, we would not see a a piece of equipment this year. Um, it would be springtime.
Okay, thank you. Uh, you wanna follow up, Counselor Gordon, then I'll go to Counsel, uh, Mayor Strathern, and I think I have Counselor Ocheski.
That's fair. I mean, supply chain issues are definitely among us right now, and I don't really want a knee-jerk reaction spend, you know, tonight. Um, I guess what I'd like to do is just tell you that I really hope to see some kind of solution on the budget in the fall. Hopefully, we get started in the fall and don't kick it into next winter. And uh, you know, ask us for what what you think is gonna be the most versatile tool, not just for the goose poop, because that does happen, you know. We need something that's versatile. So I do look forward to seeing that, and uh, you won't find the argument against it. I'll find other places to save money because. That the public is expecting us to do something about this. And I think just letting, you know, my neighbor with his dog running around loose. And calling it a day is not what people are expecting us to do about this. So. Look forward to that conversation at budget time. So thank you for your your explanation on this and your uh, your candid. You know, and your experience, helping impart the reality of managing our expectations.
Thank you, Counselor Gordon. Mayor Strathern?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I will, I won't argue with some of the comments that uh, Counselor Gordon's made. I think that uh, people are expecting to see. Uh, the situation cleaned up somewhat. I I would like to suggest, though, that uh, we approve what. Mr. Flannery has put on the table as a start. And that I think Mr. Flannery and Mr. Campbell have heard. Some of the concerns from uh, council and that we might want to approach it. And I think Mr. Campbell's cognizant that we might want to approach it in the budget as Counselor Gordon said. For the moment, let's let's implement what Mr. Flannery is recommending as a start. And uh, this, as he says, this problem isn't going away anytime soon. So we will, we can then delve further into the efficacy of the various devices at uh, scooping. It's clear and been and doing double or triple duty, cleaning our sidewalks and our trails, et cetera. Uh, building it into a more comprehensive look at pros and cons, different types of equipment, rather than going for the lowest price that you drag behind and all it does is pick up. Excrement. Uh, we might uh, look at something a little more versatile, but at least allow Mr. Flannery and Mr. Campbell to go and think about what those might look like while these other things are. Are are taking shape.
Counselor Ocheski?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think this is a great move in the right direction, and I think uh, public expectation is uh, what it is. And I think. Whether it's your neighbor that lets their dog out there, or, you know, we spend fifteen thousand dollars on a guy who lets their dog down there. I think the results are uh. It'd be fairly similar, and our return on investment is gonna be much better this way, I think, personally. It also gives us an opportunity to uh, offer our residents a sense of purpose, a reason to set their alarm for five o'clock in the morning, uh, to take their dog to accomplish something. Uh, there's a lot of people um, that haven't heard their alarm clock in a while, and uh, as funny as it sounds, you you do get to miss that uh. That sense of purpose and a reason to leave the house. And uh, they just opened the stay-at-home order up today, so you're allowed to leave your house. So uh. This is a good opportunity for people to find a new hobby or something that they enjoy with their pet. Um, you know, the the crew that used to do it wasn't canine-trained uh, super uh, geese fleet. Uh, I did, I do recall I was around for that time. So um, not to put their business down or anything, but um, I think we can accomplish it with uh, what we've got. And uh, I have a theory personally that geese hate local music. So if we could get that stage full of local bands and local artists, um. I I truly think that that will help drive the geese away personally, and that's just my personal uh, theory. So we'll see how that goes this summer.
Definitely worth a try, Counselor Ocheski. Definitely worth a try. Uh, Counselor Maine?
Um, just a quick question. In the report, it said there's a certain kinds of grass that they don't like to eat, rye grass. It said that we tried putting it down in some areas, but it was ineffective. I- is that uh, is that solution still on the table? Or is that incredibly costly? Because you'd have to reseed acres and acres and acres of of waterfront, grassland. Thank you.
Mr. Flannery?
Uh, through Deputy Mayor, Counselor Maine. Um. Yeah, that was an option um, tried in years past, um, not one that was found to be successful. It has negative impacts. To the ecosystem there at that location and uh. Um, we have, I've seen it tried uh, in in other parks as well, uh, including uh, in my previous role. It was not uh, a successful tactic. Uh, and it it does come at a high cost.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I remember forty years ago, there was a Counselor Ross that uh, had quite an idea to get rid of the geese, but uh. Unfortunately, uh, council today didn't take that uh, uh, option, and we're now forty years later. Uh, still deal with the same issue and that is still a bit from Counselor Atwood, former Counselor Atwood. If we, they were rats, we'd uh, definitely be rounding them up and uh, it would be an issue. But uh, because they're beautiful Canadian geese, uh, we have to deal with the problem and hopefully uh, we're on the way to start getting uh, getting this issue under control. Uh, any other questions or comments with regards to this item? All is in favor? So carried. Thank you so much. Next up, we have uh.
Deputy Mayor, if I could interrupt for a moment?
Yes.
Um, with respect to item ten point two, the Midland Bay Estates, council did vote on the amendment. And even though you read the the motion with the amendment in it, um, the original motion was moved by Counselor Downer and and seconded by Counselor Oshewski. So perhaps you could just call a vote on the main motion just to follow um, proper procedure, just to ensure that they, council did vote on the main motion. They voted on the amendment, but I don't think they voted on the main motion.
Okay, uh, so you heard we have to. No, I thought we went directly to the main motion. I mean, the amended motion. We still need to vote. We've gotta vote down the main.
Well, as as part of the the amendment, you you included the amendment in the main motion that you read. But you had already read the original motion, so that we had two sets of movers and seconders. So just to clean it up process-wise, yeah.
Do I need to read that council grant the extension of draft plan of subdivision pursuant to section fifty-one thirty-three of the Planning Act? For the Midland Bay Estate Draft Plan of Subdivision File Number M D dash T dash zero zero one dash four two fifty-one, three eleven. Three fifty-three Fuller Avenue for a period of eighteen months. And that council approved the revised draft plan condition as outlined in Attachment Three. Is that correct?
Yes.
Uh, we, do we know, I apologize, I had the mover, uh, was Counselor Downer and second was Counselor Ocheski. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, we heard the motion. All those in favor? Sorry, Mayor Strathern?
What exactly are we voting on here now?
We're just voting on that uh, the motion that states this, that we uh, changed the extension to eighteen months, and it ends on December twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. We just need to get the official, uh, Madam Clerk is asking, making sure, I don't think they had a mover and seconder when we voted on that at the first time. That's the amended motion.
I thought that we actually approved the amended motion. What the clerk's now asking for is to vote down the original motion.
No, we're asking for an amended motion. I didn't get the mover or seconder. So we're getting the mover and seconder to approve that amended motion, and we're gonna vote on it again.
Want to make sure I get the right card.
Yeah, yeah. So uh, is that correct, Madam Clerk? So we're voting on the amended motion. Uh, I have a move by Counselor Downer, second by Counselor Chesky. Are we okay with moving and seconding that, Counselor Downer? Yes, okay. We know the question. All those in favor? One, two, three, four, five. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Appreciate it. I apologize. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, next up, we have COVID update by Mr. Dino, uh, CEO, Mr. Dino.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and uh, I was at Little Lake Park just prior to this meeting. I can confirm lots of people are eating french fries. I didn't see very many seagulls eating them. Uh, in terms of the COVID updates, um, stay-at-home order expired today. I think uh, most people are aware of that, so you can go out for non-essential purposes, but. Um, still need to practice those public health measures that are in place, masking, distancing. Uh, staying within your family groups is still part of the guidelines and restrictions that are in order. In uh, Simcoe Muskoka, total of almost twelve thousand cases since uh, COVID started. Twenty-five people are currently in hospital across Simcoe Muskoka. Uh, and two hundred and forty-six people have died to date. So uh, again, um, a terrible tragedy. Um, and and it continues, although uh, it is improving, as I think we all, we all appreciate. Only seven cases in May. Uh, for Midland, this is down from thirty-two in April, so quite a steep decline. So coming off that big curve that we saw, so that's all very positive. Zero people in hospital across North Simcoe. So that's uh, fabulous to see in terms of uh, no one in the hospital. Uh, unfortunately, we have lost eighteen people uh, to death as a result of it. Uh, on the vaccination front, about fifty-three percent of Simcoe Muskoka people have been vaccinated uh, to date, which is great. Um, a little over six percent have been fully vaccinated, had two shots. So again, making progress on both fronts there. Uh, we also saw the announcement today that school will not be returning until the fall. So again, I think the very cautious approach being done by the province to to reopening and I know there's many opinions on that. Um, but that was the announcement today on on the school front. Um. Part of uh, the relax relaxation of of the um, stay-at-home order will allow people to travel to their secondary residences. So I think we'll probably see more traffic, certainly. In Simcoe, as we see uh, people accessing those those secondary residences, which are always popular around here. In terms of the town services, we've always been open since COVID started. As we said, we've been doing it by uh, by appointment. Most recently. We're looking to open the doors for the public. Um, we're trying to do it for Friday. Uh, I think we'll be able to hit that mark. If not Friday, then by Monday, we'll open the doors. Certainly, our staff find it. Uh, safer than having to deal with all the people coming to a closed door and having to deal with those logistics. So hopefully, we'll be open for traffic. On Friday, of course, at any time, you can always do it by appointment, and that's been been extremely effective uh, to date. Uh, the other thing we are doing is as we take a look at the three-step process that the province has introduced. So right now, they are looking at June fourteenth as the date for to enter step one, if we continue on the vaccination front and if the public health indicators are positive. That's the caveat that is applied to all three steps. If the public health measures are are positive, and that has a lot to do with hospital capacity. So that it, that is one thing that always has to be considered. But uh, we're hearing rumors that the province may look to try and advance that June fourteenth date to enter step one, and that would allow for some. Um, retail, non-essential retail businesses to actually start offering services and to some degree offering, you know, outdoor patio services for restraint. So those things, I think, are always, uh, people are looking forward to. And if we continue that very positive trend that we're seeing, we may see that sooner than later. So as we, as a town, look at those three steps, we are starting to plan what could be possible. Uh, as we enter those three steps, when you enter one step, you stay in it for at least twenty-one days. And then if the if the indicators are positive, you can continue into the second step, and then the third step, which which uh, will result in, you know, fairly wide opening of. Of a lot of businesses and events. So we're taking a look at our event calendar, looking at uh, our services and trying to determine what could be possible in a very optimistic. Scenario. And obviously, we'll have to look at the regulations that come out as the steps start to be revealed. But we'd like, we'd like to start uh, giving everyone some sense of what the rest of the year can look like, so they can obviously plan around it. And uh, we're we're trying to make sure that we can enjoy all the town has to offer with all of our residents. I know who are. Who are very much looking forward to doing it, but we must do it safely. So I just wanted to let you know that that is certainly going on. Um, I think that's uh, oh, the other thing, sorry, we are planning as well, you know, the Mass Vaccination Center. Uh, that we are hosting at our recreation facility, the the health units indicated that may that may not be needed past October-ish. So we'll have to um, certainly plan with the health unit, the transition of that service. Uh, as we move through the three steps, we'll obviously need our recreation facility to offer services. We'll look to see how we can accommodate both. The vaccination effort and also access to our services. So that's part of the planning that's going on with that as well. Uh, but with that, I'll turn it back to you, Deputy Mayor, and certainly you'll open to take any questions.
Very much, Mr. General. Any questions or comments with regards to this item? I don't see any. Thank you very much for your update. Counselor Gordon?
Uh, just a quickie, I just showed it to the town. I wasn't sure if it had got done yet, but we got the grass cut at Town Hall. It was nice to see that, but it was making the rounds online, that it was looking pretty, pretty embarrassing. Anyway, I'm glad to see that's done. Um, and I'm happy to see that we got the students out there and the town is getting cleaned up. Anyway, I'm glad to see that's done, um, and I am happy to see that we got the students out there and the town is getting cleaned up. Uh, there's a good PR release about those stakes that were, um, found in the park showing the no-mo zones. The response online, I mean, other than the usual, you know, sometimes there's people that aren't happy about anything, has been pretty positive, uh, generally about that initiative, and, you know, the only fund that was being poked was at the Town Hall, cuz they didn't realize that was part of the no-mo zone. Anyway, I'm told from my eyes in, in town that, uh, that's been looked after, so yay. And I do also look forward to, uh, the resumption of normalcy in our community as soon as we can, cuz there's so many, like our service industry, like the hair salons and things like this, that are just remain shut or, or god knows when, you know, there's so many people struggling, so. Um, COVID-related, uh, for those people who follow on me on social media, she, you'll see I sent a, got a picture of getting my shot, so again, I'll just echo the other many, many times that, uh, the CAO and everyone else has been encouraging you, book your shot, get your shot, and get vaccinated, the sooner we get those numbers up for the province, the quicker, uh, they're gonna open things, that's the new plan now, so. Go get your stab, get her done, I haven't grown an antler yet, and, uh, it's worth doing.
Well said, Counselor Gordon, any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Mr. Dino, we'll move on to notice the motion, any notice of motion from council this evening? I don't see any, uh, general announcements, I'll save the butter tart, uh, info to Counselor Maine, so Counselor, uh, sorry, Mayor Strathern?
Thank you, I'd just like to remind people that there's a, uh, seminar at MCC tomorrow. Um, and it's around aging, uh, with resilience, and after yesterday, and hauling a bunch of stuff around, I think I need to attend the, uh, seminar, I'm feeling a lot of pain today, so. I recommend it to people to go on the MCC website, I believe it's at seven o'clock tomorrow, and perhaps on, uh, I think it's on channel fifty, the three Rogers, and, uh, they, they will carry it subsequently, but I think it's worth attending.
Thank you, Worship, Counselor, Counselor Gordon?
Just a quick, uh, more of a safety tip, and perhaps the CAO can speak to this one. I'm, I've been alerted that there's a, maybe a dangerous situation down by the coal docks, where there's some big bolts exposed from some work that's happening down there. Uh, if you do walk your dog or wander down there, I'm told you need to be a little extra vigilant right now while some of those activities are happening. And ma- maybe the Mr. CAO can speak to that a little further, cuz there is things happening in construction, sometimes lead to situations that you gotta be careful around.
Mr. CEO?
Yeah, Andy, uh, Andy might comment on this, I know Mitch, uh, if Mitch is still around, I, actually, if Mitch is on the call, I'll let Mitch comment on that. He was, uh, uh, working with his team on, on identifying that issue, and I think they're gonna be taking care of that.
Mr. Sobel?
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor, and through you to Counselor Gordon, um, yeah, we were made aware of that, it, it's kind of, uh, tied into the proposed works with the Midland Bay Landing, um, Development Corporation. Um, I spoke with, uh, Mr. Flannery earlier today, when I was made aware of the concerns of, there's a number of anchor bolts have now been exposed when they had to expose the existing concrete to get some final dimensioning, so, um, Dylan Staff is going to go down and make the, the area safe for the interim, um, until the, the Midland Bay Landing Corporation can get in there and finalize their work and, and deal with it properly.
Greatly appreciated, thank you very much. Counselor Downer?
Yes, thank you, uh, what's the status on Pete Peterson Park? I was down there on Sunday, and it was pandemonium. There was at least forty people lined up trying to get their boats in, the docks were full of people fishing. It wa- it's chaotic, and I'm afraid somebody's gonna get hurt. Uh, somebody let me know what, what's going on with, uh, the docks, or?
Mr. Campbell?
Uh, through, uh, Deputy Mayor, uh, at the last council meeting, we, council did approve, uh, emergency purchase to replace that one damaged dock, uh, so we're going through the ordering process. It will still be six to eight weeks before that dock is available, so in the meantime, there will be long lineups, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Maine? I was gonna, I was gonna take your butter tart tour, but I wa- I thought it was more appropriate for you, I know you're, uh, you're the guy with regards to this.
Thank you, yeah, it's quite unfortunate, we are, obviously unable to have a big gathering of two hundred thousand butter tarts available for sale. Uh, but we have adopted and, and they put together a nice little, uh, uh, butter tart, uh, bike trail, uh, and they've featured no- a number of, uh, businesses in town that sell butter tars or butter tart related things, some people have even deep-fried butter tarts, uh, which I have yet to have, but it's on my, uh, wishlist, um, uh, yeah, so, uh, please check that out. I was trying to pull up the exact information, but it's, uh, uh, the town of Midland, their tourism, we have a bunch of fun activities over the course of the summer, and Butter Tart Festival, Butter Tart Tour is one of them, and it is Bike Month, so put some air in the tires and be safe out there on the trails and roads, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Maine, uh, a deep-fried butter tart is amazing, by the way, uh, Counselor Pro. You definitely need some time on the bike after, though.
I just wanna let everybody know that the, uh, base program, the Huronian Restorative Justice Program we have in Midland, um, we've been trying to figure out what we can do to help people through COVID, because we know everybody's so tired, and, you know, some people aren't working, and other people are overworking. So it's, I don't know, COVID fatigue, um, and everybody needs a break, so we've come up with something that we hope that most people can enjoy. It's, it's get the dishes, not the family, we've teamed up with, um, Phil's in Penetang. We'll be, um, having meals for three families per week, so if you go on our Facebook page, Face Circles, um, and if you can't find it, go through my page to find it, um, all you have to do is pick a number between one and twenty-two. There'll be a draw every Sunday morning, and there'll be three numbers picked, if it's you, then you can pick up your dinner on Wednesday from Phil's. And you do get menu choices, and we're just hoping to, you know, let somebody, everybody know that, you know, we care, and you get a night off, and it just might feel good.
Thank you for sharing, Counselor Prost, great idea. Any other que- uh, any other announcements for this evening? I see none, so we'll have, uh, move by Counselor Pro, second by Counselor Maine, that the committee rise and report, all those in favor? So moved, your worship, it's all yours.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, next item is a motion to adopt the actions of the committee as a whole, so I have moved by Counselor Pro, second by Counselor Ochescy, that the recommendations of the committee of the whole for the meeting of June the second, twenty twenty-one, be adopted as a res- as resolutions, rather, of council. Um, is there questions from council? Seeing none, uh, on favor? Thank you, that carries. Next, we have a, um, there are no motions for which notice was given, and, um, so I have the, uh, confirmatory bylaw, which is moved by Counselor Downer, and second by Counselor Cunningham, the bylaw twenty twenty-one dash two-seven, being a bylaw to adopt proceedings of the regular council meeting held June second, twenty twenty-one, be passed and enacted. Discussion or comments by council? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, that too carries. Finally, moved by Counselor Gordon, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ross, that this regular meeting of council adjourned at twenty-one eighteen PM, all in favor? Thank you, have a wonderful evening, and, uh, enjoy your freedom now that you can leave the house.
Please go. Thanks, everyone, good night.